Hello, I would like to reconvene the January 18th, 2012 meeting of the county commissioners. And please join me in a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, merciful, and just as for all.
I'd like to take a moment of silence for our troops overseas and here in our country. And also a prayer for our country as we go into a new election year and hopefully we will all be guided to do the right thing. Thank you. With us this morning, we have Mr...would you like to introduce yourself?
I'm Bill Clark, Director of Cape Cod Cooperative Extension.
Great. Thank you. Budget time?
Yes. As you can see, it's pretty much leveled service.
They have their...yeah, they have all the stuff that you submitted in front of them. But I think how we've done it, Bill, is sort of what you want to highlight stuff or specific questions of commissioners.
Maybe go over some of your accomplishments, what are your goals for the future, and what do you need to get there?
Okay, so do you want me to do the numbers on those first? What would you prefer first?
Goals.
Goals?
Yeah.
Goals, yeah. That's usually what they get first.
Okay. So basically, a lot of the...we can continue all the programs that we have started. We have the hazardous waste area. We'll continue with our...I think we have 22 collections planned for this year in all the towns. Continue with our mercury. As a matter of fact, just an FYI, we're approaching, since the inception of our mercury collection program, 1,000 pounds.
It's amazing. And as a matter of fact, that's a thing to surprise everybody at the towns, that's how much, how many pounds of mercury are collected.
And when you think of it, when the...we collect the thermostats, it's in grams.
Right.
So there's 454 grams in a pound, and we have 1,000 pounds. We do get elemental mercury, but we have the thermostats, thermometers, and so forth, but it's in grams. So there's a lot of that going on, a lot of collecting. We'll continue with the sharps program. Now that Falmouth's on board, we have every town covered with collecting sharps. We provide them with the containers. We also provide the regional service of collecting them, keeping them out of the waste stream for both the town employees as well as the sea mess people.
Can I ask you a question? Go back to the, like, thermometers. How do you know if a thermometer has mercury? Is there a way to tell? Are they all?
If it's a little thermostat that was built before...
No, thermostat, I understand, has the little tip switch, but like a thermometer, how do you know if it has mercury?
I guess I would defer to Michael, who does that program. But my recollection is, you can just tell by the color. The alcohol thermometers, they'll have that silvery lining in them. And probably the age, the older they are, the more likely they are to have mercury in them, so.
Some of the old thermometers have red in them, you know, the ones that are on the surface.
Yes.
The alcohol?
Yes, probably those are alcohol.
All right.
There is one thing I would...one of the questions that had come out of one of the towns, as we got to the sharps program, is there was a sense that in some communities there were individuals that had a reason for collecting, you know, a lot of, let's say, a lot of sharps on their own, and they wanted to know about the availability of, let's say, containers that could be distributed to, let's say, to members of the public. Do you have any policy when you got to that?
Yes, well, the containers are at...it depends on the town. It's on our website, where they are in each town, capecodextension.org. Mostly the fire departments or the health department. And they can get their containers, bring them home, fill them up, return them, and then they're recycled. We have a company that picks them up. Periodically, they do a milk run to all of these sites. So if a person needed disposal of sharps, they are able to.
And in terms of how, what is the expectation as to how they would be delivered to a collection point? Does it matter? Are you suggesting any type of, you know...
Well, they get a container, they put them in this, it's a plastic container, it's covered securely, and returned back to the, let's say it's a fire department.
Okay, well, let's say that someone doesn't have their container. What do we recommend to people as far as how they would collect their individual sharps to, you know, to bring it to the police station or fire station?
Well, some people put them in the, like, when they finish with their detergent bottles, the plastic bottles and so forth, they put them in those. But that's, I guess that's better than throwing it in the rubbish. But it's still not...I would suggest that people who use sharps to go to the collection sites, get the empty containers.
Okay.
And that would be my strong recommendation.
Okay, well, I think that, I think the people need to hear that.
Sure.
I did have a question on a 4H program.
Yes, okay, that was the first one. All right, well, since you want 4H, well, we have, in 4H, we have, we continue with the clubs and a lot of very positive outcomes with clubs throughout the county, as well as after-school activities. And they keep going, and lots of activities going on, and all throughout the Cape. Activities through the summer, through school vacations, a lot of interest, a lot of need, and we're fulfilling that.
How many children do you think are involved in 4H, the rest of the Cape?
Depends, well, the, the club activities, I'd say, on a regular basis, probably in their neighborhood 500. If you include all of the after-school activities and, like, babysitting classes and so forth, 5,000 or so in that ballpark.
Great.
In other parts of the country, 4H...
Go right ahead, but we have a lot to cover. Go ahead.
In other parts of the country, 4H is also the place for junior achievement, using, you know, is incorporated. Junior achievement is a program that provides business training to, or let's say, an exposure to business training for kids in high school, and it has become an extracurricular activity that's part of, part of a school program. It's, I think I've spoken to you about it, you know, in past time, but the traditional image of 4H is for agriculture. The, the junior achievement model would perhaps extend the interest to people since on, in our, on the Cape, we're very interested in providing, let's say, some support for, let's say, for understanding what the elements of business are.
Sure.
So I would, I would ask you over, you know, over the year to see whether or not there's any opportunity.
Sure, okay, that's something interesting to look into. It's, the 4H is traditionally associated with agriculture, that's where its roots are. We continue to do that. However, there's a lot of other projects that they work on, dog clubs, they have a club where they do robotics and engineering-type things. So there's, it's quite a range of opportunities.
I would like to zero in on the assistance to the shellfish agriculture industry.
Okay.
You know, I'm aware that Wellfleet's having its problems down there, and it's saying that you're...how are things going there? I don't think people really understand the involvement you have with the shellfishing community and the resource. I probably learned it not only just from you, but best from those who receive your services.
Okay.
Who sing your praises, I must say, you and your scientists, but they don't know where they'd be without you. So maybe you should go into that a little bit, on how you help people that are looking into being a shellman, shellfisherman?
Okay.
And what we're doing to help remediate some of the problems that are...
Okay, just to give you a broad brush, we work with all the town constables.
Right.
So both the commercial diggers and the residential permit holders benefit from the work we have with our shellfish constables. In some cases, it's research. Definitely, we do the shellfish propagation program. We just went out to bid, and we're going to be, again, providing seed, cohog seed and remote set oysters to most, if not all, the towns in the Cape. So propagation begins here for the Cape sustaining industry. So that's through the municipalities. So we have a regional program where we meet with the constables on a regular basis and work with them, determine what their needs are, and help with their projects. From the private sector part, there's about 230 commercial shellfish farms in Cape Cod. And they're a quiet part of our economy. That direct dollar amount, farm gate, I guess you'd call it, is probably around $4 to $5 million, but then if you multiply that times about four, that's the accepted number, because what the farmer gets, then it goes into the restaurant, and it's multiplied more, and then all of the other businesses that the shellfishermen use, equipment-wise and so forth, is part of our economy. So it's a native historic traditional industry. We provide technical assistance on a regular basis, disease testing, assistance on how to get started. For example, we just ran a course, it was about an eight-week course, on shellfish farming, and a lot of new people interested in going into the business somewhere, people that are already in the business looking to refine their skills. And we cover all aspects of shellfish farming.
Do those, do you pay, do you charge for those courses?
Yes, I think it was $150.
Okay.
The shellfishermen have spoken about the idea that it takes the same amount of labor content to, let's say, to get a bushel of cherry stone versus a bushel of cohogs, and of course cherry stones are an intermediate step before you get to cohogs. And I was wondering if there was, if you saw any, any demand for seed because they were cultivated, they had identified in the area places that were just concentrating on, you know, on little necks and cherry stones?
Demand for seed, absolutely, there's always a demand for seed. That's one of the potential impediments to the industry is the lack of reliable hatcheries. So hopefully, we'll be able to resolve that one in the near future. But, but there is definitely a demand for seed.
No, my, my point is that the amount of money that a shellfisherman makes, based upon the amount of labor that he does, you'll make, I think, about, with a factor of 10 or 20 times what you'll get for a bushel of, you know, of little necks or cherry stones versus a bushel of cohogs. And one of the, you know, one of the issues that they bring up is, since they're trying to make a living doing this, I was wondering if you're getting any pressure to, let's say, to focus on more seed in order to cultivate, because the turnaround should be, you know, should be less, as far as, you know, getting to a point where they're, you know, where they're edible or feasible.
Sure. And the turnaround is dependent on the water body, you know, how, how much food is in the water. So in some places, it might take two years, and other places it might take three years to go to maturity, or grow to mature. But yes, there is more and more demand, but I think the bigger demand, in the last couple years, has been for oyster seed.
Okay.
Because oysters are commanding a bigger price, and there's a lot more interest in oysters. So there's still a steady interest in little necks, but oysters have been bigger.
Okay.
We're also looking at, this year, at razor clams as an alternate species.
Razor clam?
Yes, big interest in razor clams. So we're trying to get the seed in razor, razor clams on an experimental basis. And we also had, I think we showed you the, when we were at Falmouth last year on our tour, the scallop nurseries that we have established, trying to restore their scallop industry.
What's the difference between the zebra and the razor clam? Because I know the zebra clam used to be a big menace.
Oh, yeah, the zebra clam is a, zebra, cradle, mussel. Is an invasive species, it's not native, it's taken over a lot of the freshwater lakes. One of the great lakes I know is the one dated.
Yeah.
And razor clam is a native clam, it's a long, thin clam.
And, you know, I used to see a lot more of those shells on the beach than I have...
It was a big fishery on time.
I mean, I'm talking 10 years ago, there were many more than there are now.
That's, we're trying to restore that fishery, but it's seeded. It's tricky to raise the seed, so we tried this year to start the project, but we're not successful in getting the seed. So we're trying again this year, so that'll be a new initiative. Our water quality monitoring continues. We have four sites, Catuit, Barnesville Harbor, Pleasant Bay, and Wellfleet, where we continue to monitor water on a regular basis, 24/7, salinity, turbidity, chlorophyll A, pH, et cetera. When we were on the tour last year, we looked, we looked at one of the sites in Wellfleet Harbor. So we're testing a number of research projects. Eelgrass planting, for example, we had a grant this year where we planted eelgrass in several sites.
Right.
And worked out the kinks on how to successfully plant the eelgrass. We were funded by the Nature Conservancy on that project.
Now, these are all, I mean, I think this is where, you know, your, your work excels, and, and I know that they had a disease problem in Wellfleet, but they're also doing this shellfish initiative to see, because the density is low, the population density of human beings is lower, and yet they still have some water quality issues. This is to see if we can remediate it in a natural way, as opposed to other more expensive methods.
Absolutely. I didn't mention that there are several sites who have built reefs, oyster reefs, and not only to rejuvenate the fishery, because there's an opportunity for people to take the oysters, but it also cleans the water at the same time.
Right. And this is where, we're going to be having the collaborative in here this afternoon, and I really, this is the one area where the communication between you and the collaborative and the Cape Cod Commission, you know, I hope flows, not just by saying we put it out to the public, did they read it, but just to make sure that that goes to them and communication goes back, because that all is going to help with us understanding regional solutions on this.
Sure, it's not the only solution, but it's one piece of the puzzle, particularly some invasions.
But it's 5 to 10 percent, it's a huge 5 to 10 percent in dollars, so...
It is, because it's, it's a, it's a resource.
Right.
They can harvest it, utilize it, and at the same time, they take the nitrogen out of the water.
Economic development, and it's a native industry, let's just say, so I appreciate that.
Okay, I have some concern as to whether or not you're communicating with the Cape Cod Commission, because it relates to what she was talking about. It, it talks about guidance, it's from a vision of, let's say, the DEP, you know, grant-funded employee assisting municipalities solve the waste and recycle.
Yes, Mike on our staff, Mike McGuire, who heads up the hazardous waste program, has working, has been working closely with Patty Daley, the commission. They, together, they wrote a grant to hire, to get them funds, DEP, to hire an individual who will be working with all the towns, the person will be jointly supervised by Mike and Patty on recycling efforts, trying to increase the recycling. So that looks like a winner, and yes, they've been working together quite closely.
Thinking back on that, there's another activity that the Cape Cod Commission is involved with, with regard to the instar herbicide and pesticide. And I noticed that in your Master Garden program, you're providing some education activities, and I hope that you're, you know, you're communicating, you know, with the Cape Cod Commission with regard to it, because I think it had been our contention that, you know, with Sykogo, you know, we look, we look for the enemy in a edas, so we want to make sure that everybody's participating. So I hope that your Master Garden program is communicating with, you know, this inventory of what, you know, what herbicides.
We haven't been asked yet, I'm not sure where they're at at that point.
Yeah.
But they're looking specifically, my understanding is, they're looking specifically at an inventory of what's sold.
Yes.
Now, that wouldn't involve the Master Gardens. We provide a service of answered questions and providing technical assistance to the public through the Master Gardens, but my understanding, they were going to the actually garden centers and anybody that uses any type of pesticide to get an inventory of what is being used.
I think Bill's, Bill's contribution on this end is education. So once we know the load and how, your work with the Master Gardens can be advice, you know, as far as those education pieces that we put out there, and how can we all contribute to the reduction of this?
Sure. Well, we've been working with, you're the greatest management for years.
Okay, you're receiving phone calls now.
Right.
If somebody, if somebody in the public has a question with regard to the efficacy or the amount of, you know, the amount of material that's appropriate for application, I believe that, you know, Master Garden Program and the Cooperative Extension is in a position to respond to that question.
Absolutely, yes.
Okay.
Okay.
And with Roberta retired, just retired, we'll be, we're trying to fill that position, so.
You couldn't have somebody who comes after, I don't think you're going to really get a replacement.
I know. Let's take, let's go run the way out, so.
Yeah. That was a very nice time this report. Oh.
Just to, just to, so that we don't have to go over every single issue on this, but the tick...
Lyme disease?
The Lyme disease, I do know that Brenda and, and Dr., I'm going to say...
Danta.
I was going to say Donat. Danta is, has been appointed to the commission.
A statewide commission.
Right. Brenda and I met with, had a conference call with the Secretary of Agriculture.
You mean, Health, I think.
Health, excuse me, and with Senator Wolf's representative there. And it really looks like, once that commission gets underway, then we'll start seeing some progress, hopefully, and maybe some assistance with funding and where we can allocate.
To your credit, to your credit, the only place, the only funding in all of Massachusetts for Lyme disease work is here in Barnesville County, so thank you for continuing, providing this. We've still continued to look to the state to provide some funding.
Right, and they, and they did state in that phone conversation is that they look to us, and they will look at Brenda and, and Dr. Danta as being the lead voices in that group to help others learn what we have already explored.
I was telling Mark the other day, we looked, we had a small meeting the other day with, within the last couple weeks, with Brenda, and we looked at the state mass public health budget, they have a $472 million budget, and certainly they apply, they're funding a lot of programs, but there's not $1 they have Lyme disease.
Right, well, maybe this commission can highlight that change.
I hope so. Just while we're on that subject, this is an interesting year in that there's no acorns this year. And acorns are the fuel that, that run the forests, the whole forest ecosystem. And the white-footed mouse and squirrels and other mammals, mammals depend on acorns.
Acorns.
So this year, we had a good population of white-footed mice, and they're the most competent vector for Lyme disease bacteria. Back in August, when the larvae were feeding, there were plenty of mice around. Come fall, no acorns. Now those mice, we're anticipating a big drop-off in mice. I mean, they'll, possibly a 90% crash in the mouse population. Next spring, when the nymphs are looking for a blood meal, there won't be any mice. And fewer animals in the forest that depend on acorns. So they'll be looking for a blood meal somewhere else. We're expecting a big year for Lyme disease. Pets and people would be the source of blood. They'll be hanging out longer, looking for blood meal. So 2013, we're anticipating, for the same reason, that the population will drop off of ticks, because there won't be mice for their fall blood meal. So they need three blood meals to complete their lives.
Right.
So it's quite interesting, all of this.
But it also begs the question, why are there no acorns?
Two reasons, well, two, it's been a perfect storm for no acorns, because there's two groups of oaks. There's the white oak group, which includes a white oak and several other oaks. They, they produce their flowers in the spring, usually around late, on Memorial Day, and set their fruit in the acorns, which is different up here in the fall. This year was very rainy, so they were not pollinated and fertilized. A year ago, it was 2010, the red oak group oaks, the red oak, the black oak, the pin oak, the scarlet oak, the scrub oak are all in that group. They produce their acorns, it takes 18 months. So they, the spring of 2010 was also wet, so it affected the flowers and the pollination and fertilization of the red oak group oaks, so there's no acorns with them either. So in my tenure, working in this field, it's the first time both white oak group and red oak group oaks have not produced acorns. So it's the perfect storm for no acorns, which really affects...
A lot of base.
Oh, yeah, you think birds, ground nesting birds, if there's no mice, or fewer mice and small mammals, the birds of prey, that's what they feed on, so it goes right through the whole forest ecosystem. Deer depend on acorns, so...
So we'll have to keep an eye on that.
Yep.
And also the reforestation of our forest lands and that sort of thing, just, and now that you mention it, I do have less acorns on my...
I didn't find one in my house.
Yeah, yeah, now that you say that.
And it's not just the Cape, it's all the Northeast, and Larry's been in touch with a prominent ecologist in New York, and they have no acorns in New York.
Wow.
The whole Northeast.
That is scary.
Quite interesting.
Yeah. It's an eerie thing.
It is.
Sorry, we should keep an eye on it.
Well, just to go back to Lyme disease, so the takeaway really is, is that lower mouse population is not really good news.
Oh, no, for next year, it's going to be a tough year for Lyme.
Yeah, so you're going to have to take extra precautions.
Extra precautions, yes.
Okay.
We have a lot of information on our website, capecodextension.org. If you go to the natural resource section, and there's a lot of information on Lyme disease. So, or if you like publications, whatever, we have them at our office.
And before you leave, I have a copy of a DVD from Mike McGuire on a show that he did, he can upload to the...
Okay. All right, let's get down to the numbers, I guess.
Sure, okay.
But you, can I just ask one question?
Yeah, go right ahead.
About CMAC, can you talk about CMAC a little bit?
CMAC is part of the marine program, and we've been fortunate to be funded by the state on a regular basis. We receive $50,000, and I happen to co-chair the CMAC group at Southeast Mass Agriculture Center. And knowing that this is an industry that is an up-and-coming industry, the state's been good to provide some supplement to our budget. We have a board of directors that you all appoint. Mostly industry people are on that board, and they tell us what the problems are in the industry. Wellfleet has some issues with disease of cohogs this year, for example. And we allocate $50,000 to disease testing, for example. We have a research farm network, we have 10 different sites around the Cape and one-off Cape, where we run experiments, the same experiment in 10 locations. So we have replications to determine methods of growing shellfish, disease testing, you name it, lots of different opportunities. This is where the razor clam seed project will come under, under the innovative or alternative species, to see if we can successfully grow them and increase their opportunities for another market.
Is that part of the seed propagation RFP you have for the razor clams, or is that separate?
That's separate.
That's separate? Where do you think you're going to get them from, the razor clams?
I, hopefully, ARC will be able to raise them.
Yes, which...
We raised them once, when we had the hatchery going at the academy.
I didn't remember that, yes.
We raised them once. They're very difficult to spawn. Once you spawn them, they swim, and they move quickly, and they're hard to get through the nursery stage as well. So that's...
And how's the act doing?
Excuse me?
How's the act doing?
They're struggling along.
Okay.
Yes, we're hoping to be able to help them out. We're still looking for grants to help them out.
Right.
And so far, so, not so good.
Are we all, are we all on the same page as far as that is concerned, communication?
Well, we've been communicating, I'm not sure that we're on the same page, you know.
Okay. All right, that would be good to, that would be good to follow up with.
I have, I have a couple ideas for you. I don't know, we really haven't had a chance to talk about the idea of the user fee, a dedicated user fee.
I like that idea, but...
So, once, I will be, continue to poll the constables, and the idea is that we would have a $10 user fee to all licenses on the Cape, maybe a $50 user fee for commercial shellfishermen. All that money would be put in a dedicated account in the county system, and it will help us borrow money and pay back the principal interest.
We do need a revenue stream, I suppose.
That will be it, yes. My calculation is we could probably borrow $2 million with the, the numbers we have today.
If we can, yeah.
Yeah, so that's, that's part of the puzzle, it's not all of it, but it's part of it.
All to keep seed available.
Yes, without the seed, the industry's done. It's, it really is a shame, it's, it's done.
Okay.
According to this, you only have, you only get $25,000 in FY13 for an extension vehicle?
Yes. Basically, the only new things, everything else is pretty much, there's a couple numbers here and there that have gone up for supplies and materials and all. But the new things, $25,000 for a new replacement vehicle. We replaced one last year. We have two others that I'd like to replace, I'm doing one at a time. We have a 2002 pickup truck, so it's 10 years old. I have a 2005 vehicle that we all share in the main office. The pickup truck prime works, provides transportation for a lot of the projects with the Lyme disease program. The other vehicle will, provides transportation for most of the staff who are going to different meetings and so forth, and have to carry things. That's a small blazer. So that's my only big ticket item this year. And we, we, we had $25,000 budgeted last year for the replacement. It came in at about $23,500. We replaced the truck last year.
The other thing is that, and it ended, what you submitted, was the groundwater guardians continuation?
Yes, groundwater guardians. The Cape Cod Commission ran this program, and when they had a reorganization in their staff, they laid off the individual who ran this program. I spoke with Patty Daley. Groundwater guardians. The Cape Commission ran this program, and when they had a reorganization in their staff, they laid off the individual who ran this program. I spoke with Patty Dealey about it. She wondered about the future of it. It's an excellent program. We took it over. Basically, every school in Cape Cod, school system, 4th through 6th graders participate in this program. It's water education. We work with 20 AmeriCorps members. And we set up a site, let's say a gym or cafeteria or a big hall, set up exhibits throughout the area. And the children move from one exhibit to the next. And they learn all aspects of water, properties and so forth, about the groundwater. And at the end of the day, they are, there's a review evaluation of how well they did. And it's very impressive to see how much these kids retain in the area.
Right.
So.
And have an understanding of their environment that they live in.
Yes.
Yeah.
So basically, I'm asking for $10,000 for that program. However, I anticipate somewhere around $5,000 in income. And so total cost of the county would be $5,000. We reach somewhere around 2,300 students. We had 11 programs. Some of them are regional. So for example, I believe it was Orleans, where Eastham, Wealthfleet, and Province Town busted children there, which helped to work with in this Orleans system. Recently, we had one in Falmouth, where at one school, three or four other elementary schools busted children to that school. So we have 11 sites where around these.
Great.
And if you want to see a high-energy day, let me know, and I can give you the schedule.
Okay.
Very interesting.
I would like that.
Yeah, okay.
When we've gone around to visit, you know, towns, one of the things that's remarkable is the amount of visibility that the cooperative extension has in the community. And of course, part of the visibility is a good thing, but part of it is, we say, well, that's a program that comes out of Barnstable County. So that's some argument for maybe changing our name to Cape Cod County, because I think if we had that, I think there'd be, you know, be a direct connection. But I want to say that universally, the feedback that I've gotten from the services for the cooperative extension have been really wonderful in terms of positive recognition of value. And all of you people should be congratulated.
Well, thanks, I appreciate that. I think we work with just about every department and every town. And not to mention the general public through a lot of our programs. So some departments more than others, but at some point in time, we work with just about every department.
Okay.
And one, one last thing. The bottom line, is that just for personality had 834,000 as a bottom line? Does that include all of, all of the other costs? Or is this just personality?
Well, don't forget, even as we speak, Cape Cod Newsman Health Group is voting on their rates. So I'm going to have to go back and recalculate all the group insurance costs in all of the budgets. That's universal. This one, I notice, I don't think this one has the updated retirement allotment. So I'll have to redo this one. And I'm not sure about the salary numbers on this. But you do notice also, it doesn't have the coastal geologist pieces factored in. And I was just about to ask you that.
Yes, we just got the contract. And when I put this together, we hadn't had the contract. But we do have that. And what Mark's referring to, we call it coastal geologist, but that's one of the programs. We receive half the salary and benefits for our marine resource specialists, our coastal geologists, and our agriculture specialists from Woods Hole Seagrass. So every year, you know, for the last 10 years or so, they've paid half their salaries and benefits. And some of their travel as well. So it's been a great relationship.
Yeah, that's why, over $150,000.
And this year, I think it's $161,000.
Terrific, yeah.
Last year was $140,000, somewhat thousand. So that's been a great relationship. And then UMass will continue to contribute as well. I think we get $58,000, or $56,000 for UMass towards the offset salaries.
And they used to pay you guys directly. Now they're doing it kind of on a reimbursement.
Yes, the salary account is up a bit, because in the past, they paid the employees directly. So a portion of our salaries came from UMass directly. Now to make life easier for them, the county is paying in total, and then UMass is reimbursing the county. So I ill them on a monthly basis.
I like that, because other programs that are, you know, where we are told to pay upfront, they then, there's some resistance in terms of.
We just started this in October. And we're billing them on a monthly basis. And I don't anticipate any problems.
If there is any, I hope we'll let Mark know.
Well, yeah, we're watching and caring. The concern about going to this methodology, obviously, is it makes it easier for them, since there's no direct impact on a person, is to say, well, instead of 53, we're going to send you 49 next year, or 44.
And that's why I've been resisting it for years. But from the UMass basis, let's say an individual gets $5,000. It's, it was complicated for them to be on the empty role.
It's complicated for us, too, because then we're, you know, in my budget, I'm doing calculate, you know.
I know.
It's a pain, but.
I know, they were, so.
It is what it is. I just wanted to ask Bill, to just kind of update us on these two things, the forest fire preparedness and your mini-grids, the land management mini-grids.
Okay, the forest fire program. We are in the process of doing a county-wide program. We've done 18 plans for the towns from Bourne to Eastham. Wealthfleet, Troy, Peetown are covered by the Natural Seashore Forest Program. So we've done plans. We have the towns asked to nominate the most vulnerable pieces in their town, and they have. After having done these plans, they're all on our website, too, by the way, if anybody in the towns are interested in seeing them. And what we decided to do this year is to take a look at the big picture and see if there's any real need for sites that we haven't worked with. We met with all the natural resource conservation departments in December and presented this, got the input. Next week, we meet with the fire teams, go into their association, and, and meet with them to get them on board, make sure their, their needs are addressed. Once we finish that county-wide plan, then we'll look at implementation. So the funds that are in there, we give partial grants to the towns to implement them. So, for example, right over here in Old Jail Lane, between Old Jail Lane and the community colleges, almost 500 acres of land. And it's pretty thick forest and a lot of houses abiding it. And this winter, they've put in fire roads, safety areas for firefighters. They've been working on clearing out a lot of the mechanical removal underbrush and so forth.
You took us on a tour to Papa Bottom Road.
Oh, yes, yes.
There was, you know, there was some evidence that they were doing some clearing in order to support it.
In that area, we also burned, we do prescription burns in appropriate areas. That was appropriate, it's about an 1,000 acre parcel. Yamath is done burns, Mashpee did a burn. So every town has, depends on the area. It's sort of fine, tailored to that area.
One of the concerns that I've had for some time is as we put more land into conservation use, there doesn't seem to be a support for land management planning. And that is an element that, you know, that we've been providing as a county to the community. And I think that, you know, the people need to hear that, because the putting land into conservation where it is not immediately accessed by the public, provides a liability for the community, because they're not, you know, they need to have a plan to support advancement of it.
A bill was filed to allow the towns more freedom to use CBC money for maintenance. And I don't know where that bill is now. But that's, that's, hopefully, will help the towns out.
We should hear about that. If you could follow up on that, let us know, because I think that's a crucial part of, of our effort to support conservation, but at the same time to support, let's say, community involvement for the protection of the.
Ownership, ownership responsibility.
Now, on the other part of the question mark, land management grants. Every year, I go up the bid, and towns have a competitive process where they submit projects that like to have funded on land management. And from the tool last year, you saw some of the community gardens. Last year, we built, we funded a community garden in Wealthfleet, Province Town, in Eastham. We did a handicap access process, a project at the beach in Falmouth, also in that parcel in Falmouth that you visited on Sandwich Road last year. So we've done a lot of projects. Built that small bridge over the salt marsh in Yamath that I think you stopped at or you stopped at there.
Right, yeah, it's beautiful.
So that's quite a variety of projects. But the towns submit them, and they're, they're in the range of, usually, I guess on the high end of $4,000. Some are a bit as low as $800. So there's small pieces of funding that usually match the towns' money to do a project. Wealthfleet over on, oh, what's the name of that little, the bridge that goes over to the?
Yeah, Uncle Tom's.
Uncle Tom's, we just did a project over there.
So we'll have to keep this in mind for the Barnstable.
For the Barnstable Village, yeah. They're looking, they want to do a walkway to the sea from like the back, right out here between the tavern and general store.
That's where the old tribute hut used to be.
Yeah, the old tribute hut, yeah, we went over all that.
That was land that we gave to towns, and now they're going back to.
Yeah, well, they're, well, we're their neighbor. We're the biggest neighbor, and so they're doing a revitalization.
That's a beautiful spot on it.
It is, and they cleared a lot away, and they've done a lot, you know, clearing out in the back of the Dolphin and the tavern here, and the general store of Fred Mighty's. I mean, it's sort of individuals going in there, making sure that they've gotten this out. But their ultimate goal, so we were talking about their plan, and, you know, we can help them in very, like, the low-hanging fruit is to change the signs, allow them parking on weekends after hours, that sort of thing. But ultimately, down the road, if they are going to be able to do this walkway, maybe we could partner with them, with AmeriCorps and something like that done. Because you did a really beautiful job in Yamath, and I think that's exactly the same.
We, if they apply for the funding, this year, they applied for a parcel on Main Street, on the West End. It's a little park there where we provide a funding for sprucing that up and, I think, planting materials.
Well, we can look forward to that in the next.
This brings up a question that, you know, that I have, that do we have an inventory of land that is under the county's ownership? And not necessarily control, but let's say parcels of property that belong to us. I know they want to embrace its way. Was it the?
32.
32. I don't have that inventory. I know just because of.
I talked to Mark about that today.
It's limited, though, Bill. It's pretty much here. The Bourne, former county hospital property, Second District Court in Orleans. And then the only other property is the Benning Lane property.
Is the 132, yes.
That was another project we funded this year. Behind the Second District Court, the town of Orleans owns a parcel out there, the old Putnam parcel.
Oh, so is that.
We're funding that restoration of that parcel.
The one right behind the courthouse, or is it?
Yes.
Yeah, oh, okay, so the Orleans town owns that now? We swapped that back with them.
No, that was their parcel. When the Putnam's owned it, I remember the Putnam's had a big greenhouse industry out there. They, I guess, sold it to the town. There was an issue of access from, because of the bike path there, I think. So I think their access now is from behind the courthouse.
You can get at it from behind the courthouse.
That's where I attended it when we did the inspection of the parcel.
How many acres would that, do you think that is?
I'd say, oh, at least 10, maybe 20.
Okay, all right.
Small piece of property.
It can be accessed through parking lot. Maybe we went through this in Howard Community Center, so that's possible.
Yeah, they may be asking you for access, and I hope you'll grant it, because it's quite a beautiful spot. They're going to put a community garden out there, and I think a small opportunity for a small parcel for farming.
Oh, nice, okay.
There is one, I have a note to myself on here on NSTAR, on an education element for public, the industry professionals and public grounds, maintenance employees in the area of pest management to minimize pesticide use through implementation of IPM techniques. What does IPM stand for?
Integrated Pest Management.
Okay.
So we look at all the options, pesticides are included. But we try to look, explore all the options in addition to pesticides.
So in addition to the public, being able to call the master gardeners about advice on applications, we're also providing education for professionals in the.
For example, on our website, we have growing degree days. We keep tally on a weekly basis. And we calculate growing degree days, because insects develop based on degree days.
A degree day is based upon the different.
Well, the 50, we use a 50, a 50-degree number in that every day that's above 50 degrees, if the average is above, so for example, if the high temperature's 60 and the low temperature's 50 for that day, the average is 55. So the five degrees above 50 is five to growing degree days. We know the development of insects based on growing degree days. So we're able to put up on our website that there's 121 growing degree days. And this is typically when a certain insect is developing and become a problem. That way.
You can treat it when it's.
It's treated, but not, not before it. It patches and before it becomes a.
So that's, we do that for a lot of pests. Now, we also monitor the pests. So we teach how to monitor. So if there's a certain number, there's what we call an economic threshold, where if you have a certain number of insects below that certain number, it's the cost of the treatment is greater than the damage that the pest will do. Above that number, the, the cost is, of the damage is greater than the cost of the treatment. So we have those economic thresholds for a lot of pests, turf pests, fruit pests, vegetable pests. Larry's doing a workshop for vegetable growers this year on all different, different types of vegetable pests and economic thresholds and growing degree days and things like that.
You said 180, so 180 degree days would be half a year. So six months of the year, you actually have development of insects?
Oh, yeah, yes.
In ways that you can look at that.
Well, actually, no, that's, that's.
We've been keeping.
Let's say there are 5,800 regular degree days for, you know, for heating purposes. So is that?
Well, that's, that depends on how warm you keep your house. This is, this is the. This is the.
What's the costliest pest in terms of economic damage in Massachusetts, do you know?
Well, fortunately it's not on the Cape, probably the Asian long gone beetle. And that has hit Worcester, Worcester area quite heavily. They had to remove all the trees and that's probably it.
We're very concerned about that wind gets shipped down here from firewood.
Yeah. But there's a lot of agricultural pests that can be factored in there too, so it's hard to answer that one off the top of my head.
Yeah, I remember when I was a kid, it was like Japanese beetle was eating blueberry bushes.
Oh, yeah.
Right, you don't see it as much, I guess.
No, actually, there's a beetle called the Oriental beetle that sort of displaced the Japanese beetle.
Yeah.
In terms of taking over its system, ecosystem.
Okay.
All righty.
Anything else? That's it?
No, I guess, like I said, it's pretty much level service and what the replacement vehicle and wet fest request.
I think I mentioned to you, maybe I didn't, Bill, that, you know, last week we had our revenue discussion and it was a bad year off, so it was going to be a tight year, so.
It's going to be a tight year. We're going to try to do everything.
All righty, well, good luck.
And I thank you for doing your projected capital improvement as far as those numbers because there's no surprises.
Bill's always good about doing that.
And the way that, yes, I really do appreciate that because that's something that we should keep in mind in our forefront and we should have that on a lot of different.
I think it looks like it's a couple of years out, we're going to have to have a talk about the Coastal Explorer and how you sort of, maybe in the next couple of years you have to think about how you vision that going forward.
He has that forecast for it, was it four years out?
We already have, just to refresh your memories, you allowed me to take the fee and put it into a special revenue account.
It was a fund.
And we pretty much have the money to replace it.
Oh, good.
But you know, to the credit of Eileen who runs that program, it's 13 years old and it looks brand new. She keeps that thing meticulous.
Oh, yeah, I've been in administration.
It's just for 7, 8,000 kids that go through that every year. That's just in the schools, not including the summer kids. So we probably get upward of 12,000 kids in that. It's meticulous.
Okay.
So it's actually in good shape.
Good.
Excellent.
Let me give you that.
Thank you, Bill. Welcome back, we are now here with Andrew Gottlieb, Executive Director of the Ways Water Collaborative, who just came from a meeting, I was able to spend a few minutes over there, which I didn't go there and do. And so.
So just a review this year as a backdrop to next year. The budget for the collaborative this year is $452,000. And it broke down to a couple of major categories, you know, my contract expense, some general expenses for the collaborative operation, $150,000 in municipal support, which went to the two contractors who are providing the direct assistance on finance and engineering and planning. And then $100,000 for the scientific review process and 100 for legal defense. Right, so that adds up to 452. This year.
The legal defense is a reserve account, right?
No, it was appropriation.
It wasn't appropriation, but it's.
It was this year.
Was this year. So this year for fiscal 13, we're actually coming in asking for $150,000 less than current fiscal year. And the primary source of that savings is in two accounts. One is scientific review process is over. That was a one time.
Jesus.
That was a one time expenditure.
Very well.
And I think it was money well spent, as it turns out. And then the, we're not asking for a specific line item for legal defense this year. You know, we participate, as you well know, in the mediation process. We withdrew from that prior to the end of the calendar year 2012. We're not a party at this point. The parties are going to do whatever they're going to do sometime in the next month, they're going to settle, they're not going to settle. Not anticipating that we'll become a party. Therefore, at this point, we don't see, I can't justify asking for a tight budget year appropriation for additional legal defense funds. If something happens that requires us to get representation, we'll come back and talk about it, but it doesn't make sense this year. So I did recommend, and the board agreed to recommend to you, that we increase the funding in the municipal services account from 150 to 200. Frankly, it's been a very popular initiative, I got towns, not lined up, I mean, we're trying to service everybody who's requested. Truth of matter is that particularly Tamanika's time is more than 100% allocated at this juncture. So, you know, we're doing, we're responsive to everybody's requests, but some things are happening a little bit more slowly than others. So I continue to see ongoing requests. You know, we're pretty well distributed across the Cape. You know, we've got, we've provided service from found, from born to wealthy.
The concern that I have is the battle for hearts and minds among constituents, there seems to be an understanding of the need to do it, there doesn't seem to be a commitment to do it or to pay for it. So one of the things that, when we talked to Paul's Wiki, was what kind of, what kind of a program, what kind of strategy was he looking at in order to, let's say, to get people on board? Now, in the case of time this morning, for example, there was an article, My View, from David Dow, who's a most recent.
Yeah, on the EJ stuff.
On Sierra. And, you know, my question to him is, the Sierra Club is an organization that can mobilize their members in order to support this. And I put the question to him this morning as to what are you doing in order to mobilize your membership in order to get behind, this is a very important issue, because in the issue of environmental justice, the density of population of people who are less affluent are the, usually the areas that need the most attention. So the question comes, in my mind, it becomes a community responsibility almost in the area of safety, not to, let's say, to take the responsibility for paying for it, rather than using the Benhaman approach, which focuses the cost in the areas that contribute to the environment and the.
Typically, I think, you know, environmental justice in this context takes two forms. One is citing, you know, typically, and this is certainly true in more urban areas, environmental justice discussions, it's a focus around citing of noxious facilities that have health and environmental impacts and tendency of those to go into less affluent and less politically powerful communities. I don't think that's so much of an issue, I don't think that issue's going to play itself out in a big way around here. The other way it's going to play is affordability. And I think that, you know, the answer to the EJ issues is the same answer that we give across the board in this, that the regionalization process, in that it allows you to lower the overall cost of a project. And by dealing with something regionally, you address the distribution of costs over a larger number of people over a longer period of time are the ways that you try to mitigate the financial impact on any part of the community.
I view nothing more important than, let's say, than aggressively pursuing solutions in a management, I'd say, in a management plan that gets implemented.
And I don't think that, you know, I don't, I don't view this, I think the EJ issues are, they raise certain interesting questions about affordability. I don't see that driving the discussion that much in this instance. I think the, I think it's very clear, and it's been very clear, that the county's role in this has been to find ways to lower the overall cost and lower the per capita hit. And, you know, that benefits people at all levels of the economic spectrum and makes it more likely that we can get something done here. So I think, you know, the overall program, I don't know what Paul's answer was, but my answer is to your question, I think in the coming year, we will have not large, not completely put to bed the issue about demonstrating that there's a problem. I think the scientific review panel put most of that to bed, without the statements that the panel made about the causes of the problem being human septic waste and not, you know, not inorganic nitrogen that's in the ocean that washes in on the incoming tide and atmospheric deposition and all this sort of not my problems that don't expect me to pay for it, causes that people can point to, pretty much lay those to rest. And I don't frankly hear a lot of arguing anymore about those questions.
And you know, you know, what was very interesting in that is that they were able to explain that there is a difference in those nitrogens. So you can actually measure which nitrogen is the impact, which I wasn't really aware of until that peer review. I mean, that was one fact that I came away with that was heartening because you can have, you know, scientific.
Well, that's been the essence of it. We've been having that argument.
There is proof that they can, they can say this all they want, but if you're looking at the facts, the facts.
Yeah, no, you know.
But we don't deal with facts today, we only deal with what we feel and I got.
So I think, so I think, you know, to answer your question, Bill, I think the issue of, you know, proving the point about the nature of the problem is pretty much done. And I think, you know, the mission for the coming year is going to be more strongly advocating solutions and the core of that solution is going to be regional.
And if I, if I can just add, today at the Ways Water Collaborative, Paul was there to talk about these regional solutions and how can we work together going forward. And everybody at that table is more than willing to go forward and spread the word. But, you know, he is even saying now that, you know, he is coming up with more of, this is what we can do, and flip that around, even if you're, and flip the conversation around even on the state level, because if we can actually come up with, this is what we're willing, this is what we can do, this is what we're willing to do, and this is what we need from you, then it basically flips it instead of them, you know, and then we can go after that money and make people more mobilized in that effort as opposed to all these disparaging and contradictory.
And we've also, you know, probably by March sometime, we'll have that detailed rate model done.
Right.
That'll allow us to cost out different alternatives, you know, go it alone, 15 towns versus, you know, different levels of regional, regionalization.
Is that a sort of, is that a thing, an evolution, what's he all presented to us sometime?
No, it's, it's, you know, what Bob presented was more sort of the structure of, you know, in Massachusetts Finance Hall, what you can and can't do and how your portion costs. This is a much more granular model that we've worked with CH2M Hill on, it's part of municipal assistance piece, that takes into consideration all the individual cost factors, you know, distance between connections, technology choices, debt amortization schedules, interest rates, outside sources of funding, and lets you put a whole bunch of different assumptions in, and it'll fit out a long-term debt rate structure that'll let you cost out and really detail, in a detailed level, understand the different costs that come from different types of choices that you're going to make. It'll allow you to plug in alternative type systems, we're going to leave this part on septic, we're going to do central here, we're going to do this here, we're going to do that there, put it all into the mix and give you a pretty good, accurate assessment of what the rate impacts are going to be.
Individual needs to look at bottom line.
Exactly. And have an understanding that this is, and also that it's, you know, so many years out that there doesn't have to be a fear immediately that this is going to.
And one of the powerful elements of the tool is going to be that, to the extent we're able to, it'll give us a very good basis upon which to make claims and calls for rate relief assistance. Because so much of what's going to drive the rates is the debt service associated with it. So we'll be able to show that, you know, for a given dollar of rate relief that precludes the need to borrow a dollar, how that plays out over the overall cost over 30 year or 20 and 30 year borrowing horizon. So it shows a lot of power in getting money upfront.
Getting back to a technical application issue, have you heard any conversation about the need to examine, say, the measurement standards for, say, for artificially created, you know, embayments? You know, for example, Rock Harbor is one that.
Yeah, we're proposing, and I haven't done it yet, but we're going to be proposing to state a change in the water quality standards that allows for a different classification to protect other existing uses but doesn't require the same level of remediation for, we're calling highly altered boat basins. It's going to be a very high burden to get the regs changed. I mean, they kind of, I talked to a couple of water quality staff about it and they just kind of looked at me like, can't be serious, you want us to do this?
If you take a look.
Oh, we do. So we're going to propose it. What'd they do with it?
We're going to.
Once you change the characteristics and you, and you basically set up a situation which, you know, which provides for, let's say, what I call sediment placement, because it accommodates the basin, then I think you have to take some responsibility for it.
Yeah, no, it's, it's, it's a good argument and something that ought to exist, the hurdles to doing it are really high. But we're going to propose it and see what they do with it.
The other thing is that, you know, we've talked with Wayne.
Dredge.
About the dredge.
Right.
We had our health department in here and different water quality testing that they're doing and they're getting new instrumentation in their lab. And the work that Bill Clark is doing with the shellfish remediation and his support and monitoring and all of that. So I've asked everybody to get on board and communicate with each other and not just because they've just, you know, they've, they've put this out to the public, to make sure that you have gotten it directly.
Yeah, Mark and I, we've talked about it and, you know, the answer.
And I think with the dredge.
There's a water quality rationale for additional dredging.
Yes.
There is. You know, the question is, you know, if the windows, the DMF windows stay tight, then the rationale and benefit of the dredge, second dredge goes up.
Right.
Because it's like, it's just another peak pricing problem that we have in Cape Cod. To extend those windows open up, then the relative value of the second dredge diminishes to some extent.
I think.
But if you wanted to make an argument on water quality, we can give you enough water quality estuarine restoration projects.
That's what we need.
That would justify.
We need that. And I do think that the, you know, Department of Marine Fisheries is coming around to be more flexible, if not opening them up completely, they're, you know, they're putting screens in the windows.
Whenever you need it, we can give you a roster of projects of estuarine situations that would benefit from opening and maintenance dredging and what the scope of that is. We did that. John Ramsey, who's part of the UMass Darwin team, and I were in Falmouth last night, sort of helping walk them through, their water quality committee, walk them through the rationale behind the Bourne Pond opening as part of our weapons attenuation project. John did a really nice presentation on openings as a water quality supplement that you might want to see. I think, you know, if you want that, you can do it. And, you know, we talked, because he, not just what you can get out of it from a water quality perspective on a half a dozen sites on Cape, but also some of the issues you have to think about, about depth of channel, maintenance dredging, shoaling, and it would form a discussion about what the regular routine maintenance, if we're going to, if we're going to do eight or 10 of these on the self-facing side, you know, what are the maintenance requirements to keep those openings functioning the way they were designed and what does that tell you about your need for.
Yeah, and I'd really, yeah, to work on that grant process together and make sure that all of that information is in there, not just feel like, you know, some of it, we're plugging it in, but to have everybody review.
You know, whatever the right time is and whoever you want, I'll get John to come and do that.
Good.
So.
Anything else? I know you have to get to Ross.
Good.
Yep.
Thank you. And by the way, it's part of the shining light, you know, the consistency, we delivered on the, what I call one of the most important things, which is to get this business put behind us when you go.
Yeah, well, you know what the trick to that was? Getting good people to run it, getting Tamanika to.
I spoke to him today and told him what a great.
You know, getting good people to run it and letting them do it and they, you know.
Letting them do it.
Letting them do it.
Yeah. Hey, safe travels.
Yeah.
High regards to those up there.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. That's it for, so we can do our, we'll vote on the summary of actions, I've already gone over the track this morning, so I have no issues.
You vote?
Second, all in favor? Aye. Just for those who are not here, Pat Flynn has a very bad flu today, so that's why there is two of us. Anything you have done over there?
No, I should probably, well, I do have the supplemental budget that we talked about a couple of weeks ago, and that's the bill that can go into lab, $600,000, and it's taken from the capital improvements reserve.
And that's going over there today?
If you wish to submit it, if you wish to sign it.
Do you want to vote on this?
I think we voted on it last week.
Yeah, I think when you sign it, that's effectively what you're doing, you don't really need to vote, so.
Have you heard from Pat today?
I did not hear from Pat today.
No, not today. I did try to call her before, but she didn't call me back.
This is a tough season.
Can we make sure that, how are we going to make sure that this is over? Do I keep it?
Are you going, Bill?
I am going to go.
You're going to go?
I will go, so I'll bring it over.
And you can submit and then, you shouldn't get any questions and all that.
Okay.
And it's, it is a reserve permit we're using if they want to, you know, know. Janice knows it's coming and then she said she'll schedule it a couple of weeks. Next is at 1:30, so we have some time. We're in recess, I'm going to go eat lunch.
Yes.
We have registered these at 1:30.
Can I just, Russell, you do all of your business now rather than at the end, which I'm going to be very excited in between you and the.
Right. So I think we did just take care of most of the in-house business.
When did you really start?
It started at 10:30 and it will reconvene now at 1:30 when our next person is coming on board. If you want to wait two seconds, I'll.
And we've moved by our training to next week.
To next week.
I was going to ask you what.
Yeah, so that, yeah, you didn't miss it. You didn't miss a joke. I'm sure they would have been disappointed if you were, if they were here and you weren't.
You know, I've made my thoughts very clear.
Oh, I know.
Nice. So did you vote to go to recess?
So I am going to, I would like to.
Move to we go to recess until 1:30?
A second, all in favor? Aye. Back at 1:30. Thank you.
We are?
Reconvene? Okay, now that we're back after having a duck ducks, we are reconvening January 18th meeting and before us we have Mr. Jack Mead, our registrar of deeds, to give us.
He represents one-third of our revenue.
Oh, yes, one-third of our revenue.
One-third, not all.
Yes, so he's the man that we must be.
Glad it's only one-third, as they say.
Okay, Jack?
Well, we sat down and prepared a budget for this year, a proposed budget for 2013, which we are still missing the figures for the retirement group insurance numbers, so we don't have a bottom line number to give you, but the numbers outside of that total less than what we had last year by a, they accept the number, 50,000.
Actually, the number in here, see, I started plugging those in, so the group insurance number will change, it actually go up a little bit based on the final rates that I just got from Cape Cod, just on a whole group, that we just loaded on today. Retirement, that should be about, that's about right. The 325 number that I'm looking at, so it might be a little bit different, Jack, than you had in yours. What I gave to the commissioner, I had already plugged those in.
What do you have for a bottom line number?
274, it's actually a little bit less than last year.
748, 50 grand.
About 50 grand less.
Now, within that number, we have a number of what we call funded vacancies at this point. We're not at the present feeling vacancies. They're not all funded, we have vacancies listed, most of them are, half of them are We have vacancies listed, most of them are, half of them aren't funded, half of them are.
Yeah, exactly.
We have to, yeah, well, I mean, you know, you were adjusting to, you know, business activity and taking advantage of retirements as they occur and technology upgrades as we can implement them. And so, the goal with our goal, my goal, and Mark, Dave and I, our goal is to, you know, continue to work in a method, a manner that would allow us to do more with less. And at the end of the day, you know, we all know personnel is where the expense is and if we can do it in a reasonable, you know, plan and method of allowing us to function with fewer folks and hopefully be able to have the systems in place to handle. What we would love to see is an upgrade in activity if the economy improves and when the economy improves and the real estate market in particular. And as that happens, we're hopeful that we will have systems in place that will allow us to continue to handle increased volumes, but with the lower number of bodies that we presently have or we will have, you know, in the coming couple of years.
If we did have all of a sudden a boom here, would you have, are your technologies in place that would be able to handle that and not have to go to filling those vacancies?
I think we could go, yeah, we could go pretty good, we could go a decent run without adding bodies at this point. I think we have some, we have some flexibility and elasticity in our production program that would allow us to bundle.
And we're still working on all of these systems, so that-
Yeah, we could definitely buffer a wave, you know, if you had prolonged, you know, increase in activity.
Then we'd have to either be looking at the technology or people.
There would be change, but definitely if we had a way of refinancing that hit later this year, I think we, you know, we'd be adequate to be in land.
And we're anticipating losing a couple of people in retirement in a couple of months, six months, so.
Well, this is exactly how, you know, we're proposing to, through, you know, their assesses and that sort of thing. If we have these people onboard, they can, through attrition with that, so it's not painful, it's not, you're letting people off that are depending on that, so, good.
Yeah, our operation is sort of tailor-made for that to a degree. I mean, there is this service end of it that you need the physical bodies there and obviously, but through, and I compliment the boards of the past years of giving us the money over the year, over my tenure to computerize our records going back, we're able to use those records to help because of this turnover and the change. You can plug in certain things and pull up information that you otherwise wouldn't have, and it makes that process important.
Institutional, another reason.
Okay. Just a general question. If I wanted to access, let's see, the several discharges of mortgages at my, at any, you say, my property or anybody's property, can I access that online? Sure, if I know the page number. Yeah, I mean, or the name, you know, for instance, you just plug your name in, get all this, all the activity that's occurred under your name would be available for you or anyone else. And they are public records, so you can view them. We do have a, we have a pay-to-print program in place that, so that if you want to be a subscriber, if you're an active user of the registry professional or whatever, you can subscribe annually and pay and you put money in a debit, what we call a debit account, and you just, you work off of that to, on any prints, pages that you're printing. You can do that from your office or home or whatever, or you can, anyone can do that if they want to pay the money to be subscribed.
And how much is that fee?
$50 a year and then it's a dollar a page to print.
Or, okay.
So, it's basically the $50 is the same-
So, $50 gives you the membership and then you pay for whatever payment it's paid.
Right, if you were coming to the registry, it would be a dollar a page.
Right.
You're just paying for the convenience.
Yeah, if you're a professional.
If I came into the registry, it'd be a dollar a page. Correct.
Yeah, so they're like, the towns will pay you the $50.
Right, and that's a statutory level for that. And, you know, honestly, the revenue that we pull in from our copy revenue is a significant portion of our business revenue, purposes of keeping us going. And one of the things we want to keep, I think people should understand is that the county share of registry fee revenue hasn't changed since 1980. Okay, so the same $10 we were collecting for a document to be recorded in 1980 is the same $10 we're getting today for that same document. So, unfortunately, discharge of mortgages now costs you $75 to record, but 65 of that is going to the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and only $10 of it is staying here in the county. It's the same $10 we were getting in 1980. So, our business expense or, you know, and our operational costs are, we have, I'm happy to say, we've been able to keep that pretty much in line with what the fees are in these recent down years. So, our costs of operation basically map what we've been bringing in for fee revenue, that is dedicated fee revenue to the county. Back when things were going booming, we were making a million plus. The economy was, we were, we were-
Lots of $10 adding up.
Where was the profit, those were major profit center from the fee piece. Now, it's close, you know.
Well, if that happens again, somebody has to remember these times so that we don't just go blowing this money haphazardly and then-
Well, that's also the whole, you know, I hate to pin it on Norfolk County, but they have sponsored some legislations to try to adjust.
Do we know where that is? Because we went and testified on that this summer, Bill and I.
I think it got sent to study committee. I think that's helpful, right?
Yeah, that means we won't see that again.
Yeah, one of the problems is, you know, you hate, I mean, just from a, you know, it's my flinty heart, I look at it and say, boy, I hate to see it cost more to do this service. Because unfortunately, the money that's collected is, it's a fee per se, but it's effective tax. I mean, I hate to say it for a big portion of it, all the, the money that's going to the state is de facto, a good portion is taxed. The other part of it is a surcharge for the Community Preservation Act. So, there's $20 of this CPA money that theoretically is matched, you know, from community, so it does potentially back to the Cape. But, say, $45 of it, we never see. So, you know, so I hate to add onto that, you know, but, you know, I'm not sure what the bill that's being posted, if it was going to add on the $10.
It was going to add $10, just another $10, so there would be 20 for the county.
It's rational in the sense that that's what the service is costing, you know, to run.
At least.
And that part of it is, you know, so it's defensible from that perspective, so we'll see what happens.
Yeah, there's not much of that type of, those types of things.
No.
Not this year.
I believe that the speaker specifically said, nothing that looks like or sounds like or is in fact will be- Yeah, no, I wouldn't anticipate that.
Do you guys see the business revenue? I know with all the refis that are happening, theoretically it could be happening because the rates are so low. Do you see, and that doesn't impact the excellence part, but do you see the deeds business stuff picking up a little bit because of that or?
You know, it's, I, it's, the fact of the reality is our refis, our mortgage refis are down a bit from where we were. One of the things about the rates is that they have been, you know, very good for a while now, you know, in the fives, and now they're down at four. At four, you can get a, maybe even a little bit under four, in certain cases, you can get a no points 30-year, you know, loan for under four right now, which is amazing. I mean, when I started practicing law back in 85, it was, you know, 14. So, it's just, you know, so that's, does total sea change from where we were. But those rates have probably been in the fives, fours for a while now. And so, one of the problems is that, and with the property values slipping some, you know, to some degree, it's hard for people to refi if they're, you know, they don't need that 80% loan to value ratio. Pardon? It's in a two-year, you know, two points, two years and as far as the recovery period to make it worth a lot.
But he's saying people are on the edge.
Yeah.
They're not, they don't have the equity.
The lower value ratio, right. So, what happens is, let's say you bought in, you know, you bought in the middle of this last decade, you know, '07 or '06 or if somewhere in there, and you, you know, you borrowed 80% of the value at the time and now you, you know, you're trying to refi and you can't because-
No, because your house isn't worth what it was when you paid.
Right, and so it's hard, and so, you know, they're not, and to me, that's one area where I think, you know, if we're going to, as a country or government, invest money into, you know, putting into recovery from the housing facet, it would be the, those folks who, you know, maybe with a purchase money mortgage when they bought, who otherwise have been making their payments, but maybe try to subsidize. If you're going to subsidize anything, that's the kind of thing I think you should subsidize. Somebody maybe try to refi to get themselves, who's had a record of paying and showing that they can, it's affordable, that would add to the economy in my mind, whereas-
Instead of pointing out who is to blame on this, we're all a little bit to blame.
And or try to salvage certain cases where the loan's so upside down that it's not going to be, you know, it's, you're not even necessarily doing a service to somebody for keeping in the house that's totally out of whack and relative to what they can really afford. So, again, complicated subject across the board and not easily fixed, but this might be sensible.
And we won't, okay, so we have that.
But anyway, we're hopeful. All we're talking about today is, you know, what is going to cost when the operation-
Yeah, well, you were right, Jack, last year. You were right. I was, we, I do my, I forgot.
I wish I wasn't. Let me put it that way.
I know, me too.
When you make those projections, you should put some money, get bets on it.
Yeah, well, that's the only, if I bet on it, I would have been-
What are these? What's your projected revenues on that?
It's 27.
Well, we don't have, we didn't, we didn't submit projected revenues.
We're bringing the number down. We're going to be in the like $7 million range for next year.
That's excise and-
On the excise piece. And down to maybe about three, I think is the number I used last year on the business. Yeah, they're just not, you know, it's just not happening.
It's, it's, right, I would rather be pleasantly surprised than alternative. We haven't had that discussion yet, but I think that's-
We need to have that discussion soon because the assembly would like to have, are you going, you'll be going over, are you going with the whole body?
Yeah, no, I'd like to be on the same page with you guys.
Yeah, absolutely, so we need to be on the same page so that we-
And when does the budget due over the assembly?
15. Oh, February?
February, yeah, that's why.
So, before the 15th of February, oh, we need to have that.
Absolutely, no, I have no problem with that.
And by the way, you know, the predictive future behavior based upon past activity is essentially looking at an obituary in the hope that, you know, that the body gets, you know, will recover and do better. So, you know, all of us, all of us who had to do budget forecasting, there's a certain amount of, you know, wag.
Very few people in the obituaries recover.
Right, right.
And that's only one, right?
Only one, you know. It's, it's, there's no, right, it's not, it's not a science, it's an art in some way and it's, so I, you know, I, believe me, I've made wrong bets on personal housing decisions, you know, I mean, oh, this is going to, you know, this is going to be a good move, it's a bet, so there's no, there's no, no one's got a, no one's got a trigger on it. Commercially, I, you know, I found some cyclical activity that, you know, that I could follow as far as predicting markets, you know, but that had to do with a, you know, a commercial, it's a, you know, a commercial activity based upon, you know, residential permit grabbing. So, if you grabbed 100 permits in year one, year two, I could sell, you know, X amount of instrument transformers because of the amount of commercial permits. But there's no cyclical activity that picks that up to, because a lot of, you know, as I've said to kids, when you're teaching kids economics in high school.
Thank you.
Okay. Your willingness to take out a car loan has a lot more to do with the, you know, with whether or not the economy recovers, because you're making a decision, you have confidence you'll be able to pay it back.
Right, correct.
And so, there's, I think there's a lot of that that's going on. There is, I mean, I think there is, I mean, at the moment, obviously, there's some, I think, re-trains, there's been, you know, sort of people holding close to the vest, you know, on a lot of things and it's, and it's, they need to see, I mean, there needs to be a sense that, I think people are waiting to see, just, you know, they see rain shoot, they see something, and all of a sudden they could start to really move.
It feels a little, I mean, it feels like there's, a little tide has changed more to positive, and even in this state in particular, but we have a long way to go.
And I think it'll take a while, real estate-wise, it's, you know, we're not going to see those, we said this before, we're not going to see these 20% bucks.
And nor should we. I mean, we all knew that there was something, that this was, we were living in a dream world here and something was going to happen, so.
Right, so, I mean, I think if we're realistic about what we think we can do right now. We all live in hope, plus we die in despair. We do, we do, exactly. And you remember, our job is to, you know, is to present optimism, but, you know, but try to be as realistic as possible. But nobody ever listens to anything other than their optimism anywhere in school. Right, well, everyone's, we're all half-class of old people right now, otherwise we wouldn't be.
Can I ask you, just, Jack, on, it's not a budget item, it's off-budget, but it's that technology fund piece? You guys have been pretty successful accessing talent money, just give the commissioners a background on that.
Right, there is a, within, when they raised the recording fees across the board, there was put in place what's called a technology fund. $5 was to be taken and put aside for the Commonwealth and what, we could, we could make a request of that, of that fund. Now, the fund is still out there. It was extended, that $5 piece was extended, so that they, theoretically, the fund exists and we're able to make claims on that fund for, not for operational expenses, but for technological upgrades and things like that. So, technological-related stuff. So, we've been pretty successful over the years in getting some of that fund. We haven't, obviously, we haven't been able to get it dollar for dollar and I don't think anyone's been able to do that on the county level. The state, the state's taken all.
Hi, John.
All their, all, the Secretary of State's, that's a whole different thing, I'm not sure if they, they use, they don't have the same restrictions on it that we do at the county level, but-
So, it's sort of two different processes per request?
Right, and so, we, you know, we, when we have something that we want to be able to do, we, I file requests with the legislature and through both houses and clerks and through the, we have to go to the administration technology committee and the Secretary of State. So, we submit the requests, they approve them, they then get forwarded to the legislature who, unless they reject it after 30 days, we usually get the request. So, we have, we've been successful there and we're going to continue to go forward with that.
And that's helped you do some of these upgrades and-
Yeah, the computer, like, to base for a lot of the computer upgrades, things like that. We're going to try to use it, hopefully, to upgrade some equipment, physical equipment in the building, things like that as we go forward, so try to access it. And I know it's, the account, when it comes to budget time at the state level, I think they, they, I, they-
It can mysteriously disappear.
Yeah, lots of it can go away, but, I mean, we're trying to access and free this as possible, man, so.
Right, yeah, that's good.
You know, when we can get, get to it, so.
And it's only for the registry deeds.
We did, we upgraded, we got a-
Couple rooms in the jail.
Couple rooms in the jail for storage purposes, for site access and things like that, and we were able to fund that through the tech fund, so.
Are you guys in there yet? I haven't been.
We probably have a couple of years' worth of documents stored up there.
We're going to go up on the first, February 1st.
You got to compliment the facilities guys.
They've done a great job.
Amazing job up there on doing that stuff. They've been very great, great to work with and, so they set that up for us nicely. We're in the old, like, we're in the old refrigeration.
Yeah, they took the, they took the old freezer up.
The walking cooler.
Walking cooler, yeah, yeah. So, yeah, but, so the ghosts can stay with the old documents. But anyway, it's a pool that's there, we're trying to access it whenever we can within, without tipping the apple cart over and-
Yeah, bringing too much attention to the use of the privilege.
Yeah, so we'll see what we can do there, so, but so far, so good.
Good.
Okay.
Thing is, it does have a finite end to it and one of the, it needs to be renewed by legislature and one of the concerns you have is, you don't want to become so reliant on it that it, you know, all of a sudden it goes away.
I agree.
And you put in some critical aspects of your operation that you sort of, you know, slid into that category and then-
You rely on it.
You rely on it, and then you come back and go, hey, by the way, we need a couple hundred grand, you know, that we'll realize expectation on.
But you've used it, we've actually used it to do some back-end exit projects and we're going to utilize it this year. We're changing some of the way that we do our counter recording and front-loading the job a little bit more, scanning at the counter, handing documents back, kind of a bigger picture, long-term staff reduction implementation. And we'll be able to utilize those funds to get the hardware necessary to do that. be able to utilize those funds to get the hardware necessary to do that, and it's a one-time purchase, but there's always this thing, it's a one-time purchase, because they've got life cycles, so, you know, five, five years down the road, you're gonna be looking at that equipment, we've been very lucky, the computers that we're using in our recording counter right now are running Windows 2000, because they, they serve one purpose, and they've given us ten good years, ten, eleven good years, those are gonna be replaced as part of this process, so we've been very fortunate in some of the purchases.
So hopefully, we can.
So we can get a little more life out of it.
You're meeting the goals of the state overall, though, you're being able to justify everybody's going towards this more efficiency.
We've submitted a long-term IT plan with them, and they, and they say, well, you're, this request fits in with this plan, et cetera, so we've been pretty.
So hopefully, they'll see that you can't just do so much of an investment and then go, because it really is investment in the future.
Right, I mean, they're not saying, oh, you're larding this with personnel requests and things like that, and they, they frown on that, so we haven't been, we haven't been doing that.
With the whole open cake thing and that coming, do you guys see more of this gravitating sort of service online and less physically in the building, or?
I do, uh, we, I mean, there is electronic recording that's occurring in the state right now, in some, some of the registries, and we, I have been somewhat reluctant, I'm, I wanna go there, but I've been somewhat hesitant, I'm waiting, with all this, all these court cases that have been coming down, challenging legitimacy of documents and mortgages and all this other stuff, I, I'm waiting for one to come through, I, I don't have any real reason for it to believe it might happen, but I like to sort of get this cycle, I, I, there's no, there hasn't been any court case on the validity of an electronic, we recorded document relative to real estate, I'd love to see one.
Well, didn't he have that for Fats? Remember, there was some poor.
Yeah, I mean, there's even stuff, but, so there's nothing really, we, it was out there, theoretically, it would work well, but one of the things that, and I, I expect we will, before the year is over, we will probably, we will be there, but it's, it's one of those, I'm, I'm letting a few other guys be the Judas goat on this, and let's see how, what happens with them, and, and in terms of any blowback, and, and let's see, learn from their mistakes a little bit in terms of what's going on, and, so, I would anticipate that we would be going there pretty quickly, what we wanna do is sort of get our internal systems working in the best possible manner, we have some good ideas on where we're gonna go with that, and once we get that set, and it's sort of in line with what we would have, so that electron, internal and electronic recording would almost mirror, mirror each other, and we can do that, I would anticipate that it will become a popular service, and, only because it saves travel time for, you know, and one of the things, one of the things we do have, and we haven't heard a lot of, we haven't had a lot of requests from the bar at present, you know, for this kind of thing, I think this is some, some concern, you know, we have a lot of off-cake activity, and, you know, it's, you know, you're taking out a local hand's, what, you know, and moving it off-cake, by providing this option, and that's not the reason why we're not doing it, but that may be the reason why I'm not hearing a lot, you know, of demand for it from.
Well, I think you have to be, I think your concern is very prudently based, we just read in the New York Times, within the last couple of days, about Zappos, you know, getting, you know, getting the hands, and I'm sure that, you know, the connection with Amazon says that, you know, they're enormously, you know, let's say, secure, but it can happen, and, and I think that, was it, a reasonably prudent person would take all the necessary.
Yeah, I mean, I'm a dirt lawyer, I guess at the end of the day, you know, I look at it, and that's what you call real estate, but it's just like, you, you, you know, that's, to me, that's the fundamental thing, and I, I'm not saying, I mean, we trade billions of dollars, you move, trillions of dollars, you're moving around all the time, and there will be, there will be numbers.
And they're all up there in the cloud.
And, and they're, and there's no reason, theoretically, it couldn't work from a real estate perspective, but, and it has, it does work in certain areas, but I, I don't mind being a little, a little slower on the ball.
And that's okay, because we're really not there yet, but you've had conversations, you've had conversations with Danny Gallagher as of yet, or is he, just, it's probably not a bad.
He's the one who talks about the transaction, because that's an application.
Yeah, I agree, I agree, but I think that just about the potential out there, and what is, what is lying ahead of you.
Yeah, no, I think we've been, well, we've been dealing with John Morsalak lately, locally, and, and hopefully, you know, we'd love to be part of that whole process at some point.
Yeah, just.
I was gonna say, I think there's just, we should start sorting out what the potential and what the capabilities are out there, you know, there's this e-billing thing, that's sort of the most advanced one, and there was some money, e-purveying, that that's actually going, they've, they've put in for one of the grants to fund that, so hopefully, we'll get that, and that might.
Well, it's just, you know, it's an interesting, dealing with different bureaucracies who end up wanting to get stuff on record, it's, it is, at times, extremely frustrating for anyone, as they'll, you know, those things they can tell you, but just trying to get them to put the information in their documents that we need in order to make them legally, you know, workable effectively for our operation, and it's, and one of the things you talked about was the, you know, towns versus the county and, and real estate, and just, it's some basic stuff, but it's, we use, we, registries have been using a method of recording since, you know, the beginning, and before assessing was going on, and the towns come in and they use different references for their properties that, than the title references that are used for anyone buying a property, and so, you're mixing it up, so a town board will then go and use their reference to describe a property that has no connection with our references, so, no one will find it, you know.
So that uniform, you know, the very same thing happens with human services, when you're, when there's a person in need out there, a lot of times, you can see why they give up and they don't go for help, because it's just so extreme, and there is no, there's no check for that redundancy, there's no, like, one, one form that will have all those questions, and do you need all that other information for some people, or some people that just needs one day walk, you know, walk-in assessments, so, I agree with you, I mean, it's, it's across the board, but this is where, it's just, that's just streamlining.
It is, I mean, one of my examples is down here, just, I mean, for, it's, has a long way from human services, but, you know, doc permits, the DEP issues, and the governor signs a pro, you know, he's literally signing it, and then you have to record it with the next one, and you look at a doc permit, and there's not one word in this doc permit that says where the prop, where the doc is, it just says, you know, Sheeran Alliance has requested a doc permit, and gotten granted a doc permit, and it's somewhere in, you know, in whatever town you're, you know, you're requesting it for, doesn't, and it has to be recorded to registry each, but there's nothing on it.
Then it's up in front of my house.
It shows where, you know, there's a plan that comes through, but the plan generally doesn't have any information, it just shows the doc, so you have this sort of, you're trying to figure it out, well, where should it go, if it's, if we have two different areas, recorded land or registered land, if it's, if you don't record in the right place.
You'll never find?
You'll never get found, one, two, it becomes not legally binding, because it wasn't recorded properly within sixty days, and you'd have to go through the whole process all over again, but we've written the DEP a dozen times, and, you know, can you just add, you know, something on your form where they have to plug in the title reference to the problem?
That's right, that'd make a big difference.
You think, not their problem.
It takes longer than that.
But then you, you want to, then you don't want anyone, you know, you don't want anyone in there with this war, and they won't do it, but you, some poor slobs went through the whole process of trying to.
Great expense.
Great expense to get it, you're gonna say, no, you know, somebody to get, so you're trying to figure it out, but you're sort of altering a document that you don't, this is, it shouldn't be that way, it should be part of the process, those are small little issues, but they, you multiply them out, and it just, and you have seventeen different entities that you're dealing with, you know.
It's a lot of manpower and a lot of time.
You're just trying to get everyone on the same page, it's an interesting, you know, and again, in our world, it's a little tiny little world, it's not that, you know, we're not, no great shakes for what we're doing, but it's just one of those things that, if the impact goes out, it's a major.
Just, just put the old styrofoam out there.
Yeah, okay, is there anything else? I don't have any other questions.
No, that's about it.
All right, I guess the next thing will be about revenues.
Yeah, we'll, we'll chat about that before.
Yeah, and then we'd like to have that conversation.
You might hide the money for.
Yeah.
Yeah, we have our money with you, Jim.
Good, keep me out of trouble.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, great, have a nice week, seeing you, have a good day.
All right. Hope you feel better.
Yes, well, I'm just about there, you take care.
See you, Danny.
This is Chris Kanega, by the way, he's the Orleans delegate.
Hi, Chris, Jack.
Also, he's Star of State.
Christine's wandering about, and I think we're gonna do. Soundproofs, soundproofing stuff, and take away some of those big old petitions.
Yeah.
Okay, we're back.
You have a drop ceiling.
All right, we're back. I would like to, we're reconvening after our brief recess, and now we have Beth Albert, we're our executive director of human services, and you might wanna introduce yourself, identify which one you are.
Well, Beth Albert, I'm the director of human services, Christine Stein is the researcher for our department, is working on special projects, and Kathy Callahan is our administrative assistant, so we're here today to talk about fiscal year thirteen budget requests.
Yes.
So you, before I start, do you have any questions for me up the top, if you're reviewing what you've been presenting?
In the world of infinite need and finite resources, that's the struggle in the area we're talking about.
All right. So why don't you just take it away?
Okay, sure. So when I submitted my budget, I also provided you with a copy of the human service, the department's plan that we had just finished up, so my budget is based upon that planning process, I prepared for you just a memo for today to pull out some of the highlights of the budget, and then we need to look at the plan a little bit, we can do that, but, so, some of the highlights of my fiscal year thirteen budget, first one is compared to last year, fiscal year twelve, there was a notable change this year, in that my request for the professional services line for contracted services has been significantly reduced, last year it was a hundred and seventy-eight thousand, two hundred dollars, this year it's forty thousand dollars, and I'll explain why I've made that change request, the rationale for this is based upon the planning that we, that we underfoot, and you have a copy of that plan, and that plan is also on our website, as of, it will be, as of tomorrow, hopefully.
Okay, good.
We're actually.
That's this plan here that you're, that you handed us, okay, very good.
There's two things, there is the human service department plan, that's part of the budget documents, and then there's also the January twenty-twelve to June twenty-thirteen.
Your rebate, your internal strategy.
Exactly, so that's one notable change, last year, as you recall, I requested professional funds to hire consultants to work on a variety of initiatives that we were involved in, regional projects, from homelessness prevention to suicide prevention, based upon this new planning that we've done, some of those projects, we really took a look at them, reorganized them and integrated them, with the exception of the regional network coordinator for the homelessness, I have set that aside because I'd like to maintain that contracted position. Suicide prevention, we've reorganized, and it's integrated into an umbrella of under behavioral health, so, behavioral health focus also includes mental health and substance abuse, and the plan outlines how we're gonna integrate those three related behavioral health areas and focus more on data collection, stigma reduction campaigns, and also contracting for some specific service, specific services such as prevention training and health promotion campaigns.
Has DMH agreed to dual diagnosis? You know, the problem, the problem with integrating mental health and substance abuse has been a traditional problem of people who have been advocates in this area, that they don't recognize the, you know, the need for having support for dual diagnosis.
I can't speak to the dual diagnosis, what I can speak to is, as, in our role as convener and facilitator, which is two of the primary things that we do, we, on a daily basis, see the integration, or the overlay, the inter, interrelationship between substance abuse, mental health, and suicide prevention, and, you know, for a long time, I mean, you've heard, you know, not to work in a silo, and so what we're trying to do is look at that and look at where those commonalities are from, from the work, for the work that we do on a regional basis, and not to say we're only working on suicide prevention, because we see how, how integrated it is with.
Mental health.
Mental health and substance abuse.
I asked you that question, not for my own enlightenment, but the fact that I don't think that people understand the importance of integrating those three areas in order to come up with, or that'd call a sustainable solution to the problem.
Right, I just add that I think that the partners who we work with are very on-board with that integration, it may not have played itself out in exactly the way we're allowed to see it, but I think there's a lot of support for it.
Right.
Thank you.
Okay, Beth?
So another significant change that impacted my fiscal year thirteen budget request is that we were recently awarded a Department of Public Health Mass Emotion Municipal Leadership Grant, and that award's for sixty thousand dollars, we anticipate that it's gonna be funded for five years, so that's a total of three hundred thousand dollars.
Six, congratulations.
Thank you, Christine is gonna be leading that project, and will devote half of her time to that, and so my budget request reflects that half of her salary and benefits will be charged to the DPH grant.
If I'm not mistaken, I seem to recall that Christine actually was working in an area very similar to this prior to coming to work for us, so I have great confidence that we'll deliver a very successful product.
Yeah, my, my, my background is both program management and research, so this is a nice bringing together of the two, and we'll be coming back in a little bit of time to, to fill you in on how that, we're still in the process of having our plan submitted by the twenty-fourth, and then it goes, has to be approved by DPH, so, more, more information to come on that, the last bullet, just to highlight, is that I have requested funding for a new full-time staff position that I'm calling project assistant, and funds, so, funds from the Mass Emotion Grant will be used to support harsh, part of that staff salary for this newly created position, and the project assistants will assist with the four focus areas that we identified in the plan, which are on page two, one is health promotion, the second is community-based long-term care, the third is behavioral health, that's what I indicated earlier, kind of looking at those relationship between those substance abuse, suicide prevention, and mental health services, and the regional network to address homelessness, are the four focus areas that we have identified in the plan, that person will also include in maintaining, our website is a regional health and human service clearinghouse, we'll, we'll keep 211 in-house in providing support for that project, including continuing to populate the 211 database, providing technical assistance to nonprofits, towns, whoever wants to use 211, and continuing to conduct outreach, which we're finding now in year three, people are just starting to recognize 211, like, when you ask in a meeting, have you heard of 211, I mean, people actually raise their hands now, so it's taken three years, and we're continuing to promote that as a centralized database for health and human services in Burnsville County.
And then, by the way, I've had the occasion to recommend that people access that, because I got some calls from, from people who were concerned about family members, and, and how would they advocate or support the family member with regard to, let's say, to a political crisis, and I'd recommended that some good information would be available from, from 211.
So we continue to work with the folks in Framingham to improve the data, make sure that it's, the taxonomy is correct, and all of that behind-the-scenes stuff, so that when someone does go, they're gonna have success in getting the information they need, and that person, that project assistants, in addition to what I've already mentioned, will also support the department's work on health promotion projects, such as mass emotion and stigma reduction, and I miss providing research support, that was the other piece of that position, so essentially, those are the big highlights, everything else in my budget has pretty much stayed the same, as far as budget requests.
There is, there is some concern that I have, that we do have one external program that is funded, you know, it's very important to the county, and that's Meals on Wheels, and there's been some concern about whether or not that, you know, that, is that a program that should be administered, or be part of your budget, or should be, or should it be, you know, independent, so, still, people are hungry, and having participated in, you know, in, let's think, the deliveries, it's an extremely, extremely, you know, well-received program, you know, a lot of volunteers that are involved in it.
Yeah, there's a few things that have been in my budget for several years that were historically prior to my time, Meals on Wheels is one of them, and for the last two years, we've been organizing the hospitality that the Assembly delegates.
Was that, is that the so-called council churches program?
Yes.
Okay, I think that this is the time we have to speak up and tell us what is our expectation for, it's a realistically being able to support anything other than internal programs.
Well, you heard the revenue discussion last week.
Yes, I did.
So I think we can put a zero on that number, yeah, it's, you, you've heard that, putting aside everything else, it was six hundred and twenty-three thousand, you had to cut out a budget from a revenue perspective of last year, so you add in steps, and you add in NACOLA, blah, 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 all that other stuff, and all of a sudden, you know, that number's higher, so, there's gonna be some savings, you know, as Beth said, there's some savings here, it's a lower number, there's gonna be some savings from the health insurance fees, but there's, it's, there's still gonna be a gap to close.
You know, I, just as, you know, as a response to, you know, to what you presented, my, my response is that there is a need for the, you know, for ensuring that the information that's contained in a resource like 211 is maintained in a, let's say, in the, in a continuing and persistent way, because there's nothing worse than, you know, referring people to a resource and having them go through it and then discover that they're, you know, that's not really current.
Right, and when you look at efficiencies, I mean, does it make sense for every nonprofit to create their own resource directory, does it make sense for every town or church to have their own resource directory, and, so we fight that all the time, and really, I mean, our mantra has really been, you know, let's, let's use 211, let's populate it, but that project assistant, that's just one piece of it that I would be bringing in-house, I mean, that's sure we paid a contractor to do that, or this, I should say, this current year, we paying a contractor to do that.
Is he gonna be placed?
That position was posted, was filled, we just, we terminated the contract, and now we have not reposted it.
Do you still have money in this year's budget to support it?
That contracted position, yes, yeah, that's a recent, that's, that's just within, like, the past two weeks, so I haven't really had time to, you know, and that's, you know, I, that's, that's a problem with contractors, I mean, it's the training piece.
We need to start all over.
Yeah, we're starting all over, so that's been, that's been frustrating, yeah, disappointing.
Integration is important for ongoing.
Yeah, and I, and that's where, you know, I, I think that a lot of people use consultants because they don't have to have, you know, salary and all of that, but on the other hand, you know, when we are striving for professionalism and efficiencies, is it cost-effective in the long run, I'm not saying how you're a group, and I'm not saying that. I'm not saying hire a group, and I'm not saying that we're able to do it at this point in time either, but, you know, it just doesn't...
Well, when I look at really the time that we spend in recruiting and hiring and train, not training, but using a consultant, getting them as...
Oriented.
It's just oriented, and because we've kind of, we have done this plan and rethought how we want to work and what we really need to pull back in-house, at the same time, you know, we've gotten this grant, and there are, as Mark said, I mean, there are cost savings in here because we now have part of the salary covered. So, to me, I mean, the rationale, based on what we want to do, it just, I think for consistency and efficiency, it makes sense for us to have a Project Assistant that can be, work on a variety of things and not have it all piecemealed out, it just, it doesn't make for good continuity.
I think that when we, when we set the role for the Human Service Department to provide coordination, communication, and collaboration within the county, and the evidence is that, you know, that that, that particular trust is, you know, is happening, that in order to continue with it, I think there's certain things that we need to understand that, you know, that need to be done in order to maintain it. So, I mean, to me, this is all, you know, as we look at this, and, you know, you, you came to us from, you know, let's say, from the dreaded private sector as far as stuff goes, and so, you sort of understand the, you know, the need for efficiencies in this, and certainly, in the time you've been, been here, you know, you've done that, you know.
Yeah, you've done a great job.
You know, on that...
As you all have.
As, as well as, as well as the piece of, let's say, sort of continuing the process of keeping everybody together, you know, and moving that piece, because we seem to have a great relationship now, something we had not had for many years with the, with the nonprofits, you know, providing service. And I say that that's you and your team, you know, that are doing that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question? One of the focus areas you have is the health promotion and food security, but along, we have some areas in public, you know, our health department, nutrition, the cooperative extension, and so the question comes up is how are you... Internally, you did very good.
Integrating.
Yeah.
It's a great question, and I think, I'm going to let Christine respond to that, because she, ever since we, well, let me just start by saying, last winter, was it? So, it was almost a year ago, we started meeting with staff from the Department of Health, the Cooperative Extension in our department, on, you know, what could we do? Because there are some areas that, that overlap, and that there's some areas, opportunities for, for working together. So, started that discussion last spring, and then I had the opportunity to apply for Mass Emotion. And since we, the award was announced, Christine has been meeting with staff from the Commission and the Cooperative Extension, and we need to meet with the Department of Health in the near future, as we develop the plan to, exactly to, to make sure we're, we're working on that. So, if you want to just, just briefly, the preliminary conversations with, with the Commission and Cooperative Extension, especially around nutrition.
I think that, that Mass Emotion Grant is allowing work that I've done with Kim Conker in Cooperative Extension to grow, because Kim and I have been working together with the K-Konga Network to encourage healthy, we call it healthy foods on pantry shelves. So, Kim has been very involved in some parts of that, and myself, and some other parts of it. So, now, this new grant is allowing us to come together and really work in a very integrated way to keep that motion going with healthy foods for not only pantries, but also for food programs for, for low-income people in need of, of food. So, that is something, you know, it's a relationship that existed, and now it's growing. The, in terms of working with the Commission, I think this is really, for me, a very exciting opportunity, and I've started meeting with several Commission staff around the active living piece of Mass Emotion, and ways that we can collaborate on, for example, the Pathways Project, in, in looking to the populations that we respond to, how can we encourage more use among lower-income populations, minority populations, using the pathways and pathways? So, those conversations have just begun, and they're going really well.
Yeah, it's a good group over there.
You know, it's very expensive to eat healthy.
Well, it, not, not always, and I think that's one...
Well, I think that that's one of the...
Yeah, that's one of the myths, though. I don't want to say it's entirely a myth, because sometimes it can be very expensive, but it's part of what Kim and I are working on with the Hunger Network, is resources obviously are very limited, but what can you do with that? And how can you lean toward a more healthy, more healthy options? I mean, it's not going to be buying all organic foods, but at the same time, there, there are ways that, that one can go about it for ourselves, for, for people who utilize the food pantries too.
Yeah, again, a lot of our work too, it's not programs.
Right.
It wouldn't be replicating or duplicating any programs, it's really the better integration with what's currently happening into Health and Human Services with nonprofits, with the, with the consumers and clients, and then promoting that outward, so it's more useful.
So that everybody's on the same page, and we all have the same message getting out to all the different towns and accessing them. Because, and, and those efforts are behind a lot of, you know, I see, I go into supermarkets, and they'll, they'll have lists, like, this is good for people. If you want to, if you want to donate this, this is a good, the protein here, vegetables and greens, so that's all. And I have to say, a lot of people, I mean, I just hear it in the supermarket, comment on that, because it, number one, reminds them, I should donate something.
Right.
You know, even if it's just a box of spaghetti. And number two are, you know, something that isn't...
So, that's a perfect example of Christine's work. So, Kim did that list as a nutritionist.
Right.
The Hunger Network, Martin Luther King Day last year, we promoted that, we went to it. That project has continued with Christine's health and capabilities and the disability community, so it's, that's like a really, that's a very good example of how a lot of these resources have been pulled together.
And it's from one end of the cake to the other, and in all those different arms. It's all the different, it's not just one chain that Joe Donbord...
It is actually, right now, it's just...
Because that was the traditional thing, there'd be tons of tuna fish, you know, donating. And tuna fish is good for you, but there was no variety in it, and this list was very useful, because when, when I stood at Star, at Star and Shop in Howard, people were really complimentary about it. It was very, you know, it was very...
It also continues, obviously, and, and that's the, the healthy food on pantry shelves.
Right. Good.
I get away with some old carbohydrates and fat.
Yeah, and, and...
I should read the list.
And we've been, we've been monitoring that, that the people from the, the staff and the consumers from the disability agencies, inventory, the food that's donated, and we've really seen, seen a shift into more diverse donations of fruits, you know. Obviously, it's not perishable, but it's fruits and vegetables.
And those get out there pretty quickly.
Yeah.
Good. Okay. Well, I just want to say that I've worked with Beth on the regional network to end homelessness, and it really, it's a big difference than it was three years ago in, in the cooperation and the way people, I think, have really, and I have to say, a lot of it, I mean, you know, I know I'm there as well, but I, you guys do a lot of the grunt work in the background for me, and, so I thank you for that, and you've done a great job there, and I think that all of the agencies can be commended, because everyone has been willing to put a little, put themselves aside a bit and really work for the common goal. So, that has been a long effort, but it's, it's really paid off, so, thanks for that.
And I would add to that, you know, your work on the suicide prevention.
Oh, yeah.
That work has been so important to, you know, let's say, to work with, you know, Steve, you know, over at D M H, to, to really address what, you know, what is a serious issue, because it's not just the elderly, and it's not just the young, but it's middle-aged men that, you know, that seem to be the most vulnerable population, and it hasn't seemed to go away yet, so it, it is more work that needs to be done.
Times are tough for middle-aged men. You know, if they hit, if there's a divorce, and then their job is precarious, and you're finding yourself not as young and agile and flexible with these, these issues, I'm sure it can be daunting.
It's a hard-to-reach population.
Yeah, and then they don't like to, yeah, and they're, they're male, so they're more, they're not like women who'll talk to, you know, the person at the supermarket about all their problems.
So, when I talk about a stigma reduction campaign, part of that is, is encouraging help-seeking behavior.
Right.
For depression. Yeah, it's all of that.
Yeah, no, but, yeah, I agree. No, yeah, so that people can talk about their mental illness, and I feel like they're labeled and put into a category.
Well, actually, the big thing is to be able to ventilate and share, because a burden that's shared is a burden that's lightened, and I think that that's probably, you know, sort of the basis of the successful part of the program, is that you, you need to be able to talk, perhaps not to some, let's say, some disinterested stranger, but to, let's say, to take advantage of access to what I'd call professionals that are here in the cake, that, you know, that are available to support and give you guidance in what I would call a very useful way.
Yeah, making, making, that's the basis of some of the gatekeeper training that we've supported and had, had people trained in, is, you know, is persuading people to get help. Taught, you know, listening to them, persuading them to get help, and making sure that connection is made, and linking them to the available resources.
Now, Maraware was running the youth part of this, what does that stand?
The youth project was, was funded through the Department of Public Health with a federal grant. That funding, I think officially ended this year. The Community Health Center, which is, is the, is the entity that was the fiscal agent in running that project, from what I understand, is, is keeping her on in some capacity, I'm not sure the number of hours at this part-time or full-time, I really don't know, till June 30. So, she is still doing the youth suicide prevention work, and we are continuing to do the community organizing that Candace is doing through the end of February, and then after that, we'll be doing some additional trainings, using some of the people that we've trained to, to go out and, and reach out to additional groups of people. Okay?
Great.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
We'll do our best.
Yeah, we will.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
I know, it's, everybody's asking for a little...
But I, I need, you've got to know that, you know, everybody here at this table believes in we want everybody to...
Yes.
No, I, I will appreciate that, thank you.
We'll go over it all. Okay, thank you.
That'll be it. You know what? You guys can adjourn, I'll be just before you leave, but you'll get it last next week, which you already have fire training, which we still have.
Right.
Elder Services and Arts Foundation will be here, but I don't have anything to give you, they just break something, and so I will give you R E O in Jersey.
What is, do you think it would be a good...
We start at nine o'clock.
Nine o'clock.
At least nine-thirty, Arts Foundation's first.
And nine-thirty is our first one. Okay, so that will be on...
I think it would be off at... Nine-thirty Arts, ten-thirty Health Services, eleven, fire training, eleven-thirty R E O, then we'll break, and then I think...
May I can schedule just something?